In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency Due to the Novil Coronavirus Executive Order 51 on March 12, 2020, and the local Declaration of Emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the ninth day of February 2021 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location and I am in the city council chamber. Madam clerk, would you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker? Dr. Whitaker? Mr. Wooder? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Wooder?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Mr. Pace, would you please proceed with your item, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. The School Revenue Sharing Funding Formula is a mathematical equation used to support to annually establish the amount of local revenue to be appropriated to the school board in support of education. Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'll go back. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, good evening. The School Revenue Sharing Funding Formula is a mathematical calculation used by the city of Portsmouth to annually establish the amount of local revenue to be appropriated to the school board in support of educational spending needs. Within Hampton Roads, the cities of Hampton, Norfolk, Virginia Beach use this model in an effort to provide a level of certainty for funding for schools. Currently, the city staff prepares the annual revenue estimate and uses the adopted funding formula to calculate the local share contribution for the upcoming budget. To date, staff has communicated the following to both the chief financial officer and to the superintendent of schools. Based upon the funding formula for FY 2022, the Portsmouth Public Schools is slated to receive $57,654,964, I'm sorry, $64,654,964, which represents an increase in local share funding of $929,268. Last year, Portsmouth Public Schools received a total of $56,725,696. For your discussion, Ms. Mimi Terry, Chief Financial Officer, is also online in case there are any questions that you might have relative to the funding formula. Mayor?
Thanks, sir. Are there any questions? Funding formula?
Yes, Dr. Whitaker. Are there any questions?
There aren't any questions, but you know, based on our previous discussion today, we're just going to defer any action discussion until we've met with the school board.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate you bringing that out in the front. I did have a conversation with the chairman of the school board regarding the school funding formula, and as you all are aware, we are scheduled to meet in a joint meeting with the school board on February the 22nd. And after that conversation, he was in agreement that the school board needed to provide some input and make sure that we all understood what the school funding formula, if we decided to either go with it or discontinue the funding formula, what that would mean as the funding goes forward. So that is what we intend to do. And are there any additional questions?
Just a comment that appreciated getting the involvement of the school board. I think that sets a proper tone that we're going to be working together. And so the funding formula issue, as far as discussing that and the continuance of it, is something that I think that this present council is going to move in a direction that's going to be one that works with harmony and make sure our schools are funded properly.
I agree with that sentiment wholeheartedly, sir. So when we get to the point in the discussion in the regular meeting, I know there was a resolution that was going to be brought forth tonight. We are going to, there'll be a recommendation to defer that particular resolution until we have had an opportunity to discuss the matter with the school board.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
The next presenter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Billy Butt, city assessor and short timer, will provide the annual real estate assessment report. Billy?
Everybody hear me and see me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of council. Thanks for having me here to discuss the methods, analysis, and conclusions in the annual real estate reassessment for fiscal year 2022. Tonight, I will discuss the authority and responsibilities of the assessor, our mission, and the day-to-day functions of staff. I'll break you on market conditions for the 2020 calendar year, present the proposed assessments, and talk briefly about the next steps in the process. Next slide, please. Pursuant to Title 58.1 of the Code of Virginia, it's my duty to list and maintain records on all real property within the city of Portsmouth and to ensure that the burden of taxation shall rest equally upon all the city's property owners. State code requires assessments to be uniform among similar classes of property within geographic boundaries, and it also requires assessors to strive for 100% of fair market Next slide. The recognized definition of market value in Virginia arose from a 1958 Supreme Court case entitled Tuckahoe Women's Club versus the City of Richmond. That definition has withstood the test of the time of the courts over the years and is the definition that we use today, and it simply states that fair market value is the price property will bring when it's offered for sale by one who desires but is not obliged to sell it and bought by one who is under no necessity of having it. Next slide. The mission of the office of the city assessor is to praise all real property throughout the city in a fair and equitable manner as mandated by the code of the state of Virginia, the code of the city of Portsmouth, and in accordance with the professional guidelines set forth by the International Association of Assessing Officers. The mission will be carried out in a courteous, efficient, and professional manner by well-trained staff dedicated to the service of the citizens of Portsmouth. Next slide. Some of the day-to-day functions of the assessor's office are to inspect and collect data on new construction, review and update records on existing properties, perform statistical analyses, process and validate property transfers, process parcel combinations and subdivisions, and provide assistance to the public. Next slide. Could you hit that again? Thank you. So market challenges in 2020, I think you'd be surprised if I had anything else on this slide. We started out the year with a booming economy amid great political turmoil. The belief was that the real estate market, with interest rates remaining low along with very low inflation rates, that the market would remain strong throughout 2020. Then came COVID-19, and of course, all bets were off. As the nation and world dealt with this horrible pandemic, we had no idea how this was going to affect the real estate market. I believe the majority of us felt that doom and gloom was in store. Personally, I wondered how, if you had a property listed for sale, an agent was even going to be able to show it. With all the closures, would mortgage processing come to a halt? Could you get a survey, a title report? How would closings be handled? Well, as you're getting ready to see in the rest of my presentation, all those things got figured out very quickly, and the real estate market remained quite healthy. The driving factor in the real estate market has always been the 30-year fixed mortgage rates. And as you can see here, the rates, the average was 3.11% in 2020, and they dipped even lower as we head into 2021. Next slide. This is one of the stats that I was really anxious to see when we started running the numbers. The total number of transfers was only down slightly, and this is an indicator that, in spite of the pandemic, the market couldn't be slowed. This number would have outpaced 2019 if there had been a normal number of foreclosures as we will see on the next slide. Foreclosures have trended downward since 2012 with a little hiccup in 2015 and 16. I really didn't want to include 2020 numbers because I thought it'd be misleading, but then again, I thought we should see it just so you could see, just so you'd know what they were. Foreclosure proceedings were halted in most cases due to the pandemic, and we still don't know what will happen to those who may have been facing foreclosure during 2020. The hope is that relief will continue, and 2021 will see the foreclosure trend follow the recent past. Next slide. The median days on the market for sold homes in Portsmouth is down considerably, less than half of what it was last year. This is indicative of being in a seller's market with low inventory of available homes. The median residential sales price in Portsmouth has experienced the largest one-year increase in many years. Next slide. As you can see in this slide, I've listed the median residential sales price for the seven cities in Hampton Roads for 2019 and 2020, and Portsmouth has outpaced the seven cities combined by nearly 3%. All the statistics you just saw indicate a very healthy residential market here in Portsmouth. With regard to the commercial market, there was very little movement. The apartment sector has remained very strong and will see a healthy increase. Other than that, there was very little activity in the commercial segment. This drop-off in commercial activity can be tied directly to the effects of the pandemic. These next few slides show the impact of the reassessment on individual neighborhoods. These numbers show the percentage change of the total value of a particular neighborhood. The changes are solely based on market conditions in the neighborhoods, and as we scroll through these slides, you'll see some double-digit increases with one neighborhood going up as high as 17%. As I told you earlier, we strive for ratios of 100%, and those neighborhoods that increased had ratios that were below 100%, and some were well below that threshold. For example, the one neighborhood with the 17% increase had a ratio of below 80% based on 2020 sales. After the revow process and the adjustments made, the ratio for that neighborhood came in at about 95%, which is really good. Next slide. In Portsmouth, we have 32,083 residential parcels that are taxable in 188 neighborhoods. Conversely, we have 2,450 commercial parcels in seven assessment districts. 6% of residential neighborhoods decreased in value, 83% of residential neighborhoods increased in value, and 11% of residential neighborhoods had no change. Residential property values increased by almost 4%, and commercial property values increased a little over 1%. The total taxable value as of July 1, 2020, as you see here, was a little over $7.8 billion. The total proposed estimated value for July 1, 2021 is a little more than $8.1 billion. This is a total percentage increase citywide of 3%, a total dollar value increase from the reassessment of over $260 million, and a total impact on revenue at the current tax rate of 3.4 million dollars. Next slide. Some additional considerations and information, the State Corporation Commission assesses railroads, pipelines, and utilities companies. The current total taxable value of SCC properties is $132.6 million with total levies of $1.7 million. Next slide. These are the three major tax abatement programs in the city. The DAV Disabled Veteran Program is administered by the Commissioner of the Revenue and changes throughout the year. For example, just last week, we received notice of eight new participants in this program and three that came out of it. The DAV numbers above represent a snapshot as of July 1, 2020. I ran an update on the numbers this afternoon and found that we now have 475 participants with a total taxable value of $102.2 million and annual exonerations of over $1.3 million. The two senior citizen programs listed here are handled by the Department of Social Services, and they don't fluctuate the same throughout the year. They're set, pretty much set at the same time the land book is, and they stay at that point. Next slide. This slide shows the value of taxable versus non-taxable property in the city of Portsmouth, and you can see now that 41% of our total value is non-taxable. And in the next slide, you'll see where all that value lies, and the majority of it, almost $4 billion, lies with the federal government. Next slide. Some of the, what's going to happen going forward, we will be mailing assessment notices on February 26th. The informal appeal hearings will be heard from March 15th through April 9th. Staff will continue to process new construction and alterations for fourth quarter, and the land book will be produced after the fourth quarter and will be effective July 1, 2021. Any questions? Yes, sir, Dr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. Dr. Whitaker, go ahead, sir, please. You have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Butt, for the information. I have a question so that citizens would know if they are contesting the value. I think it's, I don't know why it's that. It's something on my machine, but if they're contesting the increase, what are the materials and things that they need to do to properly contest?
Yes, sir. So as the current state law says that the burden of proof is on the taxpayer to prove that the assessment is incorrect. So the appeals process, we would ask that, we have a form that the citizens can fill out. It'll be on our website. They can call us, we'll email it to them, however they need to get it, we'll deliver it to them. You name it, we'll get it to them. The form is pretty self-explanatory. They need to provide data to us, like sales information that shows that our assessment is not accurate with regard to their house. They can have us come out and look at it. We will be glad to provide them any information they need, sales in their neighborhood, whatever they need to help them through the process. The informal process is just that, it's informal, it's kind of a discussion, and we invite people to do that because, like I said, there's 36,000 parcels in the city, and we can't look at them all. You know, we do this by mass appraisal or mass valuation, and so the informal process is very important in the whole process.
Okay. Besides sales information, what about, because what about appraisals?
Yes, you know, they can provide appraisals. Appraisals typically are done for lending purposes. What we'd like to see is an appraisal that was completed for the purpose of add valorum taxes, but we look at all that information, Dr. Whitaker. We don't just throw it out because it's done for a mortgage.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Billy, I want to thank you for the service that you've given our city. Your tenure as our assessor has been uneventful, which, when you're talking about assessments, that's the way you want it. And you've, since you've been an assessor, my phone certainly hasn't been ringing off the hook or haven't been besieged with a lot of emails, and I think we haven't had many people to contest their assessments on your tenure as well. But I want to wish you a lot of luck in your new job in Suffolk. Speaking for myself, I'm going to miss you in that position. And the other thing I would ask, are we okay in the number of assessors, not assessors, but appraisers in the city? Do you feel that we have an adequate number, particularly in the commercial end?
Mr., thank you for those comments, first of all, and any results that come out of this office, I owe 100% to my staff. They are just hardworking and great to be around. They're dedicated to the city, they're dedicated to me, and I'm certainly going to miss them and as well as all y'all and, you know, all the other people I've worked with in this But as far as numbers, you know, I think every city, every city assessor is always going to say you could use more, but we have a team here that's been assembled in Portsmouth that gets the job done. They are, they just do an outstanding job. They work really hard, they have a high parcel count, but like I said, they get the job done. And, you know, right now, as long as we're fully staffed, I think we're fine.
Thank you, Billy. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. I too echo the sentiments of Councilman Moody for the service that Mr. Butt has provided to us, being our long tenure. I think we started in the city some time ago around the same time, and we're still here. But my question tonight regarding the report, the seniors and the veterans programs that you mentioned, are we in line with where we were in previous years, and how do we offset those costs? That's the first question. And then the second part of my question is, I thought that we were somewhere along 45% of non-taxable land, so did that change somewhere with the federal government properties that we are accounting for?
So quickly, on the non-taxable piece, I think the highest it's been since I can remember, since I've been working here, was like around 43%. So, and it kind of depends on the way the question is asked. What I provided is the total value, the percentage of the total value that's non-taxable. So I think it's pretty much in line. I will say that the taxable values are outpacing some of those non-taxable. Tends to keep going up at a little bit faster rate. The other part of your question, I'm trying to remember what it is now, oh, the abatement program.
Yeah, the page with the veterans and the seniors and the elderly, the disabled.
Yes. The senior citizen program tends to stay relatively flat from year to year. It may be down just a tad this year, and I think it was down just a little bit last year. The DAV program continues to grow at a very fast pace. You know, it's a great program. I don't know how you really make up for that difference or that loss in taxable value, but, you know, certainly we all feel like we're the veterans to have a program like that.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for that information.
Are there any other questions from our colleagues on council? Well, Mr. Butt, I want to say that it is a good thing when you go out on top, and it seems like your department, under your leadership, has performed admirably, and my time on council has witnessed a lot of the good work that you all have done, and quite frankly, we're sad that we're going to lose you. But the good news is, is that you'll continue to do good work at our neighbor's place in Suffolk, I'm sure, and in our last conversation, you did mention to me, if I had any question, I could still call you.
Absolutely.
So we want to say, in the Navy, we would say we wish you fair winds and following seas. Thank you for being excellent, and we're grateful for having had the opportunity of you to work with us here in the city of Portsmouth, and we will support you in all the things you do, and enjoy your next journey.
Thank you. And if I could take just a minute to say something, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to be the assessor here in Portsmouth for the last three to four years, and, you know, it's always humbling, you know, having trust placed in you like you all have placed in me. And I do leave, you know, with a positive attitude but a heavy heart. Portsmouth's been my home all my life, and I love all of its people and all of its places. I want you to know that as I leave here, the assessor's office is in great shape. the assessor's office is, is in great shape. It's prepared for the future. Our CAMA system conversion is complete, and the coming fiscal year and beyond will benefit greatly from having such a robust and capable system. When I was appointed in 2017, I made a pledge that I would be extremely mindful of succession planning as a hired staff going forward, and I've done just that. I have an assistant assessor who's extremely bright, very experienced in real estate valuation, prepared to lead, and who's loved and respected by our staff. The staff of residential appraisers and our data analysts are extremely hardworking, hungry to learn, and dedicated to the mission, prepared for the future. And my commercial appraiser is very highly qualified. He's new here. Y'all will get to know him, I'm sure. He's forward-thinking, hard-working, and has a keen eye for statistical analysis. And last, I also want to express, you know, my gratitude for all those people that I've worked so closely with here in City Hall and over the years. We'd be here all night if I were to mention names, but you have some incredible talent in this building, and I'm a better person for having to get to know and work with them. So with that, I'll say thank you, good luck, and God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Best wishes to you, Mr. Butt.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next presenter?
Mayor, Mr. Derek Challenger, Assistant City Attorney, will provide an update on the Newport community for City Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I wanted to give a little historical background on the Newport Community Development Corporation. It's a community development authority, as I refer to at the CDA. It was created by ordinance by City Council in 2005. The purpose of CDAs are to allow public-private partnership to be formed to finance and develop infrastructure and other improvements such as signage, utilities, lighting, fencing, and sidewalks. The City Management Report of 2005 stated that Newport, your planned residential community, various infrastructure improvements are to be funded by a bond issued by a CDA. $16.2 million worth of bonds were issued to finance certain public infrastructure improvements. The funding was able to provide public improvement of a session of development, but other sessions received no improvements. So now, looking at the slide before us, in 2020, last year, the court signed an order authorizing the following property to be sold for delinquent will-of-state taxes, stormwater, management fees, and special assessments. There are four different parcels. The first parcel is 3001 Greenwood Drive, that's six and a half acres. The second parcel is Zero Greenwood Drive, it's 18.87 acres. McLean Street, 30.49 acres. And 3741 Elliott Avenue, which is 58.369 acres. One of the reasons why this particular development is so important is because it's one of the largest undeveloped pieces of property in the city of Portsmouth. Can we go to the next slide? Here, we have the amount that's owed in delinquent taxes, special assessments. So the first property, you have $379,975.73. And that, the updated number, as you see on the slide, is that, that's March 31st, 2020. As of today, that first parcel is $436,190. The second parcel, as of May 31st, 2020, was a million, $26,340, is now $1,156,000. The third parcel is listed at $3,917,488. It is, it is now $4,394,000. The final parcel, as of March 31st, 2020, is $5.8 million. Now, the current value of the, of the delinquency is $6.6 million. If you add up all four of these parcels, the delinquency is $12,588,878. Next slide. The parcel that we just went over represents a total of 114 acres that's proposed for development. We paid for an appraisal of this particular development, and it was valued at $10 million as of December of 2019. The next slide. The next steps, this matters in litigation. One of the steps of the litigation is to schedule a public auction. The public auction is scheduled for the summer of 2021. This is the third update we have in Newport. We had two last year. The last update we had, the date that we thought we were going to have the auction was October of 2020. It's been pushed back because we've been in contact with several developers, and they have expressed some interest in, in these parcels. And so correspondingly, the bondholder, as well as the city, has been in concert trying to get information that would be necessary or advantageous for developers to bid on these parcels. So we've been doing quite a bit of work with public utility, public works, because the main interest that they have, or issue that they have is the requirements they have for utilities, stormwater, management, and traffic analysis. So we've been trying to assist them, to let them know exactly what is the capability of that particular project to accommodate utilities, stormwaters, traffic. Next thing we have after that, after we have the auction, the court must approve any bids from the public auction. We had discussion the last meet time we were before council about whether or not it can be combined as to one or does it have to be four different lots? That's something that we're still in negotiations with as it relates to the auctioneer, who we've already retained. And so, so the court will have to approve any bids. Finally, the hearing will also address outstanding motions that have been deferred. There is a special counsel that is involved in this. He's a special commissioner for Sand Anderson. There is the bondholders, which is Lepus Advisors. There is currently $10.5 million in special assessment liens on this particular property, which would not be extinguished as a result of the auction. So whoever acquires this property still will be subject to that $10.5 million in principal and, and liens, which is based on the bond that was initially issued back in 2006. The one other thing I wanted to say about the project is there's only been 400 of the 1,500 originally planned residential units that were built. So there's 1,100 units that could potentially be built on this particular location. Next slide. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. How long have these properties been delinquent?
There, there are different timeframes, but on average, they all have been delinquent for at least five years.
Five years.
At least five years.
Thanks. Thanks.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Derek. The question is, and I know, I think we may have had the conversation at a prior meeting, but just for the comfort of the new viewing audience and my new council members that have joined. So we're looking to auction off or sell these properties to a new developer. Is there any type of plan or master plan or any kind of guideline that say that they have to be in line with the same type of homes that are already existing in Newport? Or will that just be up to the developer to choose his or her own desire for that property?
A site development plan will have to be issued, and that has to be approved by the city. But there's already some guidelines out there. It has to remain residential. It's a residentially zoned project. And as of right now, it's designed for 1,100, there can be 1,100 additional residential units in that particular location. So that's pretty much the parameters in which a developer would have. And that's what we've been dealing with in terms of the due diligence is to determine with the developers whether or not there is sufficient stormwater, utilities, this traffic is, is appropriate for the amount of density of housing that they're looking for. So that's the, the, the issue. The other big concern for any developer, obviously, is the $10.5 million in principal for the special assessment lien. So that is one of the issues that we are addressing in terms of going forward.
Mr. Challenger?
Yes?
This is Mayor Glover. I, I have a question. Regarding the next steps, you, you indicate that a public auction is scheduled for summer 2021. How, how confident are we that, that this is going to take place and that we will be able to begin the, the process of, of moving forward?
I am not very confident. There's, there's been some interest, but that $10.5 million lien is a definite deterrent. So I don't have any confidence if I had to give a mathematical answer. I, I would say probably maybe 50/50 at best. There, there is potential in that location. It's not that far from the proposed casino. So there is potential there, but the question becomes, what are the costs associated with developing it? And that's what we've been trying to work with, with the bondholder, to see if economically it makes sense for a developer. So I can't really tell you that I'm confident that a sale is going to be done. But I'm confident that because of the work we've done, any person who purchased the lots will have an educated understanding as to what is out there. I think in that most important thing, I think we're concerned with making sure that there is transparency with respect to the bond, transparency as it relates to the infrastructure that's currently there. So, and, and the other thing is, the city treasurer is obligated to move forward to collect delinquent taxes. So this is something that we are required to do, and we'll just have to see whether or not we have any success at the auction.
Dr. Whitaker, sir?
Yes, yes, Mr. Challenger. Did I understand, did I understand you to say that it's $10.5 billion? Yes?
Excuse me. I've had my hand raised for some time now. Are you seeing my hand, Mayor?
No, sir. I, I'm not seeing you on the screen.
Okay, well, go ahead, Dr. Whitaker.
And I apologize. I can't see you.
Go right on, Mr. Butt.
I'll make a sound. No, I'll make a sound the next time. Go ahead, Dr. Whitaker.
Is your camera on, sir? Mr. Battle?
Yes, sir, it's on.
Okay.
Does anybody else see me?
I, I didn't see you, Mr. Battle. Your picture wasn't up on screen.
Yes, I saw you, Battle.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Attorney, I'm interested in what will be the true money that the city receives in reference to a sale of that property. And by asking this, I'm trying to figure out whether it's worth our while to sell it or to look down some other avenue. The $10.5 million or whatever, does that have a timeline to be paid to us? Are there deductibles to come out of that? And if so, what amount are you talking about that will actually go in the city's coffins?
Councilman Battle, Battle, in 2006, when the CDA issued $6.24 million of special assessment bonds, it was to be paid over a 30-year amortization period. So from 2006 at 30, which takes it to 2036. So that's the timeframe in which the bonds have to be paid. No one can give you the, the answer to the first question as to how much money is going to come into the coffers, because it's all dependent upon whether or not there are bids that, that are made by any developer. And obviously, I'm not in a position, and I don't think anyone else is in a position, to say whether a particular developer is going to bid on it or not. And that, they're going to do that based off of their own economic interests, and we'll see what happens. And, and, and to the point of, should we just hold on to it or not? The treasurer has the statutory obligation to go forward on delinquent will-of-state taxes. So he doesn't have that option.
Excuse me. I'm not talking about if we don't sell. I'm saying if we do have a sale, is that $10.5 etched in cement? And how much of it will we actually receive if we do sell? See, what I'm understanding is that you're saying that once we sell the property, they are still obligated to the $10.5 tax on the rear end. What I'm asking is, are we going to get $10.5 million? What will be deducted from that $10.5 million?
I'm going to try to answer.
I'm only talking about if we sell. Yes, sir.
I'm going to try to answer your question. The $10.5 million is what's owed to the bondholders. It's not, we don't have any interest in the $10.5 million at all. That's the money that's owed to Lepus Advisors, who owns 100% of the bonds. So we have no interest with respect to that. The only interest we have is the delinquent will-of-state taxes, which we talked about, SA. And the other interest we have is on development of the parcel to produce, income-producing projects going forward. So that's our interest. The $10.5 million in outstanding principal is not our interest. That's the bondholders.
Well, we, we receive our interest, which is the delinquent taxes. And if not, what is being deducted from the amount of taxes that we are supposed to get?
The, the taxes and the special assessments are on parity with each other. So the way it works is, if there is a bid, and let's say for the purpose of this bid, that the bid was $5 million. It goes to the oldest delinquent taxes first. And then it goes to the newer one after the most delinquent taxes are paid. So to the extent that there is a five million dollar bid and the court approved the five million dollar bid, and for the purpose of this, the bid covered all four parcels, it will go to pay the most delinquent taxes. The money will go to that as well as the most delinquent special assessments. They're on parity with each other. And then if there's any money left over from the most, the most delinquent taxes, then it will go to the newest year. So that's how it goes. It goes based off of the oldest taxes, oldest special assessments. And to the extent that that cover, it will go to more current years. But I think it's.
So you're saying after the sale, we may or may not receive monies to cover all the taxes that is owed to the city? We may or may not receive monies that's owed to the city by way of taxes with this being bidding process?
Councilman Battle, you're correct. And it's probably more likely than that, that all of the taxes will not be paid. And probably all of the special assessments won't be paid because chances are, most bids and tax sales are on fractions of the total amount that's owed. No one goes to a tax sale just pays top dollar. So consequently.
So now if the bond obligation is not met, are we responsible for any of that?
We're not responsible for the ten point five million dollars under any circumstances because it's not money that we have any interest in. That's only the bondholders. With respect to the earlier question that you had about whether that ten point five million is in cement, it is a lien.
But that's not what I'm talking, but excuse me, that's not the interest. I kind of took you around the point. The interest was whether the city would get its total taxes, some of its taxes, or none of its taxes, which all seem to very well may be the case. That was what my issue or my fighting game was, the city's portion. And even if we don't receive our portion of the taxes that we have levered on them, are there any other outstanding obligations within that gamut that the city will be responsible for?
No. The only, the only interest the city has in this is the taxes, stormwater. The fees that I've talked about earlier, that's the city's interest in going forward.
So with the stormwater, do we have any obligation?
The stormwater is included in the fees that I cited.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Challenger.
No problem.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Challenger? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pace?
Yes, sir. Mr. Luke McCoy, Vice Chairman of the SIPSA Board, and Ms. Liesel Devary, Executive Director of SIPSA, will provide an update.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Lavoris Pace. It's been a while, but good evening to you. Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. It is certainly my pleasure tonight to represent the City of Portsmouth on the SIPSA Board for the last eight years. Prior to that, I served on the SIPSA Board for eleven years. It is with a great deal of pleasure that I introduce tonight Ms. Liesel Devary, which is our Executive Director, and she will highlight some of the issues that is confronting the City of Portsmouth, that is being managed by the SIPSA Board. And at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Ms. Liesel Devary, the Executive Director of the Southeastern Public Service Authority.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of City Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity today to speak with you. I know the slideshow is, it probably appears a bit lengthy, so if I skip over a bullet or so, it's, I know you have it there that you can read later. The next slide. So to give you some background on SIPSA, the authority was created in the early seventies. We are a public body incorporated in the state of Virginia. Our purpose is defined in the Code of Virginia, which is the management of the safe and environmentally sound disposal of regional waste. Our members are the cities of Chesapeake, Franklin, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and the counties of Isle of Wight and Southampton. We are governed by a sixteen-member Board of Directors, of which eight members are appointed by the governor, Mr. McCoy for one, and eight members are employees of each of the member localities. We operate and manage the regional landfill in Suffolk. We have nine transfer stations, a transportation division, two fleet maintenance shops, a tire processing facility, and a household hazardous waste collection program. Next slide. This gives you a visual of the SIPSA service area. As you can see, it covers approximately two thousand square miles and one point two million residents. Next slide. In our organization, we do all of this with about a hundred and forty employees. We have an annual budget of forty-three point seven million. The current municipal waste tip fee is fifty-seven dollars per ton. Just to give you an idea of how much waste flows through our system, of our nine transfer stations, we handle over six hundred and ten thousand tons of waste per year. Our transportation division then hauls over four hundred and fifty thousand tons, and that equates to over six hundred and fifty thousand miles per year. Our fleet maintenance division, we have one main shop that's in Portsmouth. And then we have a second main shop that is out at our regional landfill. And between the two, they manage approximately two hundred and forty-five pieces of rolling stock, ranging from pickup trucks, dozers, excavators, to tractors and trailers. We have a tire shredder also out at the regional landfill, and it processes over five hundred thousand tires per year. We use the shredded tires at the landfill for alternate daily cover, drainage projects, and also too to be building a road base. The regional landfill accepts three hundred and twenty-five thousand tons per year, and it is one of the most valuable assets to SIPSA and to the region. And primarily it's because we are able to meet the needs for waste disposal with no reliance on commercial industry. Next slide. I just wanted to give you, try to give you an image of how the waste flows through the region. Starting over on the left side, you'll see that member communities, and then we also have private haulers or commercial waste, they come to all of our transfer stations. And then from there, SIPSA hauls approximately fifteen percent of that waste to the regional landfill. And then eighty-five percent of it is hauled to the Wheel Abrater Plant, which I know you all are all familiar with. And then we also have there where the City of Portsmouth just goes ahead and delivers straight over to the Wheel Abrater Plant. Next slide. So our contract with Wheel Abrater. The Wheel Abrater Portsmouth Waste Energy Facility burns eighty-five percent of the region's municipal waste to create steam, which is then sold to the Norfolk Naval Shipyard to fuel its facilities. Any excess steam that is converted to energy and sold to the grid. So I believe you've heard about this, but the Navy plans to build its own natural gas power plant. And, there we go. So it plans to build its own gas power plant, which will eliminate the need for the steam from Wheel Abrater. So there are a couple of very important dates to note. The Wheel Abrater and the Navy, their steam contract expires in January of twenty twenty-three. But the agreement that SIPSA has with Wheel Abrater doesn't expire until June of twenty twenty-seven. We did have, we spent last year, at the beginning of last year, we started a small stakeholders group, which consisted of the previous mayor and city manager. And we got together and we were able to work with the Navy and with Wheel Abrater. And currently, they are working on extending the Wheel Abrater and steam contract by twelve to eighteen months with six months options. So at this point, we're hopeful that the steam contract will take us to at least June of twenty twenty-four. But we still don't have anything firm yet. Nothing has been inked. So of course, as you can imagine, if Wheel Abrater can no longer take SIPSA's waste, then the waste will be taken to the regional landfill, which of course is going to result in increased traffic along fifty-eight and of course accelerating the need for us to expand our landfill. Next slide. So a Portsmouth transfer station is bound to be on your mind, especially when you think of SIPSA. Currently, as you know, the city uses the Wheel Abrater RDF tipping floor as a transfer station. I wanted to make sure that you were aware that in two thousand and sixteen, the SIPSA Board adopted a resolution confirming SIPSA's commitment to provide a transfer station within the city. However, the city needs to first identify and designate the site. We shared correspondence, I think last, it was around September, through the previous city attorney. But if you want copies of those letters, I can get those for you. Kind of going over all of this to reassure them. Our strategic operating plan, which is an attachment to the Use and Support Agreement, also details the procedures to follow when and if we add a transfer station to the SIPSA network. So something else to keep in mind, you know, in the event that the RDF facility would become unavailable for one reason or another, then the city would need to go ahead and take their waste to either the Chesapeake Transfer Station, the Norfolk Transfer Station, or the Suffolk Transfer Station, which is out at the landfill. Next slide. So speaking of the landfill, this is our master plan. This is off of Route fifty-eight. And we have a total of eight hundred and thirty-three acres. The dark blue area in the middle are cells one through four, and they're actually closed, completely capped off. Then right below them in gray are cells five and six, and those are the current cells that we are operating out of. The next would be to the right, the orange area, that is cell seven. So that will be the next cell that will be developed. Above there, in green, are cells eight and nine. And I get to it a little bit further, but we are currently working on a wetlands permit through the Corps of Engineers to get those two pieces permitted. And then, of course, you see up in the top with the blue, those are all could be potential future expansions. Next slide. So per our agreements with our member communities, SIPSA must provide trash disposal capacity for at least twenty years. At the current rate of trash being disposed at the regional landfill, the current cells, five and six, will be filled by twenty thirty, but could be as early as twenty twenty-eight, dependent on volume, compaction ratio, and of course achieving the planned slopes. So cell seven, once we move into cell seven, and if all the municipal waste is going there, then cell seven could be filled as early as twenty thirty-five. So this is the reason, well, we are committed to providing disposal capacity for our member communities for decades. And this is why we have begun the landfill expansion process with an application for wetlands permit through the Army Corps of Engineers. The next slide. The main thing I wanted to show you here is if you follow the address that's up at the top of the screen, the web address, this will take you to the Corps of Engineers' virtual website, where they have set up to discuss our wetlands permitting process. So it has a ton of information. It's very informative. Because you, once you enter, you basically are entering the room, and then you can click on any of those posters, and it will read out to you and give you more information. Next slide. So our conditional use permit with Suffolk. Cell seven has been in the planning stages since the early nineties. SIPSA's conditional use permit with the City of Suffolk, which was issued in twenty seventeen, requires a new grade separated entrance into the landfill before any waste can be put in cell seven. A flyover for traffic coming from the west would meet this requirement. U.S. Route fifty-eight, four sixty thirteen, as you know, is a high-speed corridor and carries over eighty thousand vehicles each weekday. The intersection, or kind of the median, at the landfill provides entrance to the landfill, but this also serves as the very first point where someone can make a U-turn if they're coming from the west and they need to go back that way. This is the very first one, and we get a lot of U-turns there. So this intersection is the site of many, many impact collisions. And unfortunately, in twenty nineteen, one of our employees who was arriving at work that morning was hit and died, unfortunately. Next slide. So I thought I'd give you a visual. If you're coming from the west, you know, follow the red arrow. There is the median. And you have to cross three lanes of traffic in order to get into the entrance there at the landfill. Next slide. This is what is being proposed to solve that problem. You can see, like where the orange arrow is pointing to, that is where our entrance is. So what this, how this would work is there would be a ramp on the, if you're coming from the west, you're heading east, you would go onto a ramp that would be on the right side of the highway. And then it takes you up and over and around, and then it will bring you back down onto fifty-eight. And because there's already a lane there that you turn before turning into the landfill, and they're going to expand that lane so that that's what people would be coming on to. It doesn't completely get rid of the, I think they're called weaves, because of people weaving, you know, cross lanes, but it does improve this considerably. And then that median in the middle of the road there would be closed, permanently closed. Next slide. So to give you a little bit more history on this, in twenty fourteen, this flyover was conceptualized and planned to be funded with regional transportation dollars. The current project estimate is thirty-nine point two six million. SIPSA has set aside five million dollars towards this project. The project does not qualify for HR TAC funding or smart scale funding. Last year, we did make application for a federal build grant, and we were unsuccessful in that application. Then later in the summer last year, we applied for RSTP funds. And the Transportation Programming Subcommittee is planning on recommending this project be allocated five hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. That's the year they're currently funding. One of the problems with this is that the flyover is to be built by twenty twenty-six. But from what we understand, and historically, is projects or swapping of RSTP projects between between funding years is typical. So it is possible that we will get more funding, may become available in some of these outer years, and then we'll be able to reduce the tipping fee. Next slide. So VDOT is committed to this project and is anxious to get started. As I mentioned, the project completion date is currently fiscal year 2026. However, due to uncertainties and future funding opportunities, it would be in SIPSA's best interest to fund this project through the municipal tipping fee, beginning with fiscal year 22, which would start July 1st of this year. Based on a preliminary analysis, which assumes level funding, so taking the total amount that we would need to owe them and do the same level amount for each of the next seven years, we would include a $7.75 per ton surcharge, is what we're referring to it, in each of the next six fiscal years. Now, we're also, the SIPSA board discussed this at the last meeting, and it was also requested that I provide them an estimate if we would do a gradual increase. So instead of jumping up 775 this next year, perhaps we can do something lower. So it looks like we want to ramp up. We could go up $4 next year. And then each year thereafter, you're going to go up another $4. So you take another step. We hope to review the VDOT agreements this month. I've mentioned or talked with them, but I haven't received any yet. And hopes that we can proceed as soon as possible. That's it. Next slide. What questions might you have that I could answer for you?
Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ma'am, for that presentation. It's quite interesting. But looking at the annual budget of $43.7 million, so that's your operational fees that you get from the steam that's produced by the Wheel Obrader that's transferred to the Navy, and the tipping fees, are there any other costs that are factored into the annual budget?
Well, we do not get any of the steam revenues. Because that contract is between the Navy and Wheel Obrader, so we don't get any of that revenue. Our revenue, 90% of it comes from tipping fees, in which the largest portion is the municipal tipping fee. But we do also have some commercial waste contracts that bring in some money that help offset, you know, the tipping fee. We have, you know, some other, we get money for the tire shredders, household hazardous waste. You know, we do have some other programs, but the bulk of the money does come from the tipping fee.
And I guess my next question is through the eight localities that are represented, aside from the eight members appointed by the governor, I guess that's not equitable, is based on how much waste each locality is able to bring to the program. And is it a sad amount? I mean, I know if you're planning a budget, you want to know that somebody's going to at least bring, you know, whatever the amount is that they're supposed to bring every month to the facility.
Yeah, so I track that very closely. It's all going to be based on residential collections. So what each member community brings us. And we track that each month and do my projections from there. Did that answer your question?
Yes, that's, that was great.
Councilmember Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Step me through the process for approving the increase in tip and fee.
Yes. Oh, take you through, I'm sorry. So yeah, we'll talk about it again at this board meeting, because I also want to inform them of the increase and how that would look. Then in March, I actually will present the proposed budget to the SIPSA board. And then normally, the following month in April, we would have a public hearing on the tip fee schedule. So we have, and that's where we would list all of our rates and show which ones would increase. So we would have a public hearing on that. And then following the public hearing, the board is, it's their first opportunity to adopt the new rates. But they would not go in effect till July 1st.
So Suffolk, being the host city, says that without a flyover constructed, SIPSA will not have access to the expansion, landfill expansion?
Yes, sir. That's part of our conditional use permit with the City of Suffolk.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am? Hello, ma'am?
Yes.
This is Mayor Glover. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I understand that you indicated that HR TAC was not going to be able to provide any funding on this flyover expansion project.
Correct.
Are there other, any, are there any other federal resources that we can look to? I know there's been a change in administration and there's some guidance that says that they will be focusing on infrastructure and other things like that. I just want to make sure that we've covered all of those areas, and I'm sure you have. But there may be something coming down. Are we still looking at federal funding opportunities?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The HRTPO is on this project as well. We know that the smart, HR TAC funds where this project is not eligible for, as well as smart scale, we probably wouldn't compete very well, since a large part of a smart scale project has to do with, also has to do with congestion, I believe. There's an infra grant that is a federal funding, and there might be one of those that's coming around here shortly. And with the HRTPO's help, we would certainly apply for any available grants. I don't know that a new build grant has been announced yet. And then, like, we're already, we're in the RSTP program as long as the TPO approves that this month.
Very good. Thank you. And the other question is, I noticed you all had put that what the increase to the tipping fee would be per ton. Can you explain in a simple term what that means to the locality? And I don't know if you've drilled down specifically what that would mean to the average citizen. But in terms of increased costs, what would that mean to the locality, the increase in the tipping fee?
Well, it varies on the number of tonnages that you bring.
Right. I'm speaking on Portsmouth's behalf, but I know we probably just added to the tonnage amount.
So.
Mayor, I have that information.
Verl.
Yeah, to go to.
Attorney said he has that information.
Yeah, it should be around $300,000, some $1,000, I think.
Okay.
If we go up to, if we jump right up by the 775 in this one year, that is what, how it would affect the City of Portsmouth, it looks like. I'm not familiar with what you or how you bill your citizens within Portsmouth, so I'm not sure how it affects them individually.
Mr. Devery is right. It would increase about $372,000 a year for the city, which is about $31,000 per month. And that's based on a full. That's also based on 48,000 tons of garbage, which is a little high because of the pandemic. There's more garbage from residences for some reason. People are staying home or whatever. But it would result in about $372,000 a year more, or $31,000 a month for the City of Portsmouth.
What does that mean to the average household?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, sir. Based on the figures that your city attorney threw out there, it's about $31,000 a month. You have 32,000 households. It's about a dollar a month per household.
Got it.
If using those figures.
Sure.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
I'd like to make a couple of other comments if I may, Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir. You have the floor.
What I would suggest that you and council do is have your city attorney and your director of finance or financial advisor look at your use and support agreement. So you clearly understand why you're in SIPSA and how you got there.
Yes, sir.
Second thing that I would recommend, that we have talked about for a long time, even back when I was city manager 16 years ago. We talked about a transfer station. It's something that you want to put off as long as you can. And I think we're at that day that we probably put it off as long as we can put it off, but we need to start talking about it. We were surprised in December of 19 and early January of 20, when the naval shipyard announced that they were going to build their own power generating plant. It caught SIPSA off guard. It caught Wheel Obrader off guard. If Wheel Obrader goes away in '23, as Ms. Devery has stated, it will be the city's responsibility to, one, transport your trash, if the Wheel Obrader site is not available, to one of the three sites that she mentioned, or even to the landfill in Suffolk. At that time, that would become even more expensive for you to transport that trash to one of those sites. I would urge council, I would urge you and recommend that you look at, a subcommittee of council to look at just what would you do if tomorrow morning you had to start transporting your own garbage? Two, where would you put a transfer station? As most of you know, I've been involved with the City of Portsmouth. This is my 42nd year. 30 in government and 12 as a volunteer. The last eight I've been on the SIPSA board, and I served prior to that, as Mr. Moody knows, on the board when Charles Whiters was city council. I would recommend that you look earnestly at what can we do to transport our trash from a central location so it can become easily transportable? That you look at the benefits. I would be happy to continue to work with city council at your direction and the mayor's direction to try to solve that problem. Because if the Wheel Obrader site goes away, you've got 25 to 30 trucks running up and down 460, 58, 13, all the way to Suffolk. Or you have to go across the Jordan Bridge or through the tunnels, which you've got to pay a toll. You've got to go to the Norfolk site. You've got to go to the Chesapeake site. Or you've got to go to the Suffolk site. None of them are easily accessible to the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir.
We're not here because we want to be mayor.
I'm sorry.
I would be happy to help you in any way I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Yes, Mayor, and Mr. McCoy, good to see you. We served on EDA together for some time as your volunteer service as well. But my question is, how many of the eight localities have their own transfer stations?
All of them.
Oh.
All of them.
Okay.
Except us.
Okay.
Ms. Lucas Burke, we've been sort of lucky because we've been able to use the Wheel Obrader plant, steam plant as our transfer station, basically, in a sense.
Right.
And that property is owned by the federal government. Mr. Devery notified me of that. There's an easement, I believe, on it right now. So there may be some negotiations that could be had with the federal government for us to either have a transfer station there. Or, and the other thing is, the Navy is somewhat dragging its feet a little bit on this steam plant. It's not a done deal. I think I asked a question at the last SIPSA meeting. If they agreed to everything now, it would still take, what, three years to come online? And so we'll see where the Navy goes with it, but I'm not so sure they're going to move forward with that, their plans.
Correct. And one more question about that as well, with the Navy building their own steam plant. There were some concerns with the public that there was not an open public hearing on that so that some of the citizens could weigh their concerns on that. I know that there were a couple of private groups that held some public meetings on that. So, I mean, I don't know, we don't have any control over that because we're not building it. But there were some citizens who had some concerns on not being able to voice their concerns in a public hearing regarding that plant for the Navy.
Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Biggest advantage, the biggest advantage that I can offer to you, you've got the best person as your delegate in Washington, D.C., Bobby Scott. I think you need to pull out all stops to get Bobby to start helping us in a dilemma that the City of Portsmouth is facing.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Battle? You have the floor, sir.
So, Mr. McCoy, we're in need of possibly expedite looking at acquiring a transfer station for some time now. And it behooves us to get in gear and put that process in motion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Battle.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir. You have the floor. Do we have any figures this evening on how much total we pay in tipping fees to SIPSA?
Currently, in the current year, it's more because of COVID, but we had budgeted 2.3 million.
The city, of course, would pay is about 2.3 million a year.
But it's higher this year because the tonnages are up and we feel it strongly. That's due to COVID.
Except to 2.7 million this past year.
And approximately, do you know what percentage of the trash at the landfill is Portsmouth?
I don't think any trash is going to Portsmouth, because, right?
What is our trash?
You mean percentage of trash as a whole compared to all the other facilities, I mean, all the other members? Is that what?
Right, not going to Suffolk, I'm speaking.
Yeah.
The City of Portsmouth is about 9% of the total municipal waste that comes in. You represent about 9%.
Mr. Devery, does that include what goes to Wheel Obrader or just to the landfill?
That's why there's no waste. The only waste that Portsmouth is what you deliver directly to the landfill. We don't haul any of that. But I don't think it's been very much. A couple hundred tons is about all, is the most. So Portsmouth waste is not being taken to the regional landfill. All of yours is being processed at the Wheel Obrader plant.
Wheel Obrader.
Yeah.
Councilman Whitaker, for your information, Virginia Beach generates about 45%.
30, 31.
31% of the total waste generated. So they're three times, four times as much as we are.
At the Suffolk site, that's what you're speaking of?
No, sir. Everything, everything goes to the Wheel Obrader site that's generated in Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Portsmouth.
All that waste goes directly to Wheel Obrader.
Okay.
Suffolk, Alhaway County, Franklin, and Southampton County goes directly to the landfill.
Okay. And so, and so you're speaking of increasing the tipping fee, uh, for this flyover, uh, at the Suffolk landfill for which we only use about one percent?
Uh, currently, but the, the idea is, or the issue is, is that if Wheelabrator goes away, then all of your waste is going to be going to the landfill.
Right.
And Mr. Vary, isn't it, uh, some of, some of the waste comes from Wheelabrator? There's, there's, uh, waste after the steam plant that has to be transferred from Wheelabrator to the landfill also, right?
Right now, um, we're taking about a hundred and sixty thousand tons of ash where the residue that comes from the waste energy facility goes into our landfill. And Wheelabrator pays us a tipping fee for that.
Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
What's, what's the, uh, the spread on commercial tipping fee and municipalities tipping fees now? Regarding Portsmouth?
Municipal is paying fifty-seven commercials today or paying fifty-two, fifty.
Okay, so that's gone up, uh, in the last few years. Good.
Yes. And it will continue, um, this next year, over at least three percent.
Yeah, that's good because for, for a long time, uh, municipality tipping fees were subsidized in the commercial sector.
Yes. Completely aware. I've been with SIPSA since two thousand and nine. And I'll also mention too, you know, SIPSA has no debt. We have zero debt. All of that has been paid in full.
It's amazing what happened when the professionals, uh, got involved in the operation.
At one time, if people remember, we were paying a hundred and
Seventy.
Hundred, up to a hundred and seventy dollars per ton. And we are completely debt-free. And we have wiped out all that debt and we reduced our tipping fee to fifty-seven. So we are, we're on the right road. We're trying to stay on the right road. And if we can continue to operate the landfill and the proffers that were made by the, under the CUP conditional use permit, um, once we get this flyover paid for in a, over a five or six-year period, your tipping fee will drop back down and give you, give you a normal tipping fee that you should expect to pay.
Yeah, the, the financial plan we have in place is that we will pay cash for, for all of our equipment replacement, all of our improvements that are facilities. Um, so we, we have this all planned out. Um, and for capital, for instance, capital equipment replacement, we budget and spend about three and a half million dollars per year. Um, and we have just, over the last four or five years, we have replaced every, uh, tractor that we have. And now we're getting ready to replace all the trailers. So we, we've got, we've got a system down and everything is being cash-funded. Um, so having to fund this flyover has been quite a, a bit of a hit, but, um, we can do it. It's just, it, it will take a little bit, this increase for several years, but then the tip fee would come back down.
Councilmember Moody?
If, if the Navy follows through on the steam plant, uh, obviously that cuts off Wheelabrator's, uh, revenue stream, the, the majority of it. What, what is their future, uh, if, if that occurs? Would, would they still have a presence here? Will they vacate the plant?
Um, with, they're losing, yeah, they're, they're losing, um, today it's around ten million dollars, but the, the, their contract with the Navy escalates. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, I think it's closer to twelve million. And without that, they cannot, um, operate in the black. Um, so they, they would be done. Um, I am kind of asking them for some ideas and, and thoughts that they may have, you know? I think we need to find out from them what it would take for them to stay and finish out their contract, um, for us to know what that number is so we can discuss it. Um, so we, we, I communicate with them regularly on this, um, you know, until it, it's like everything is up in the air. Um, been very frustrating and, you know, to spend over a year waiting for the Navy to respond, you know, and what they're going to do with this contract, um, has been difficult.
But, but the property
We're not giving up.
But the property is owned by the federal government, do they?
Yes, all the land and, and even the, where the RDF facility is and then right next door is where SIPSA's operational system, and that's where our transportation hub is. All of that land is, is on a, is, uh, we have an easement with the Navy. And currently that easement goes to twenty-fourty-nine. So if Wheelabrator would, you know, have to pack up and go home, then I would certainly recommend we get in contact, um, with the Navy and see about what we could do with that, that RDF facility. Wheelabrator cannot take it with them.
Well, that's, hopefully that's where Congressman Scott could come in to assist in that.
But I think since the le, I mean, we already have this easement that goes till twenty-fourty-nine, so. Um, and the other thing to keep in mind is the Navy still needs a place to take their trash. You know, they're bringing it to the RDF facility and then all of the outer, um, naval facilities like out in Oceana, the beach, um, they bring them to our SIPSA transfer stations. We, we take care of their trash. It's only about twenty-five thousand tons a year, but they will still need that even though they're going to build a, a combined heat and power plant and fuel it with, with. So, you know, we, we would hope that that would continue as well.
Right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go, go ahead, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So, so to get some clarity, um, what is the, what is the purpose as far as Portsmouth is concerned, um, with the landfill in Suffolk? What is, what is the relationship there in regards to our trash?
Well, the, the, the landfill is owned by SIPSA. And so it is, um, it's a, it's a big asset for if you need to be bargaining or looking at another alternative to your waste. When you know that you have this landfill that could take all of the region's capacity, it's a, a great bargaining tool when you try to look at other alternative waste disposal, um, in which we are always interested in knowing about any of that. Um, and if Wheelabrator does goes, go the way, your waste would have to go to the landfill, one way or another. Um, so it's for, it's there for the eight-member communities. It's not there for munis, for commercial waste. It is for the eight-member community's use.
Thank you, ma'am. So that concludes our, 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 our questions. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Pace?
Well, thank you very much.
Go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, just, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And please, um, reach out to me if you have any further questions or if you want to go into more detail about how we've gotten here or what some of the options are. Um, I'd be more than happy to help.
And, and thank you once again. And I think our, our position at this point is I know that previously, uh, our city manager and the team was working on putting together a committee to be prepared to handle the situation as it relates to what's upcoming with the contract and Wheelabrator and the Navy's steam proposal. So we will continue to move in that direction. And we hope that our, our able, um, representative, Mr. Luke McCoy, continue to be a resource. Thank you, Luke, for your participation and we look forward to moving forward together.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to mention, don't forget Senator Lucas, your delegates that represent Portsmouth and Richmond. Uh, Richmond can be a very big player. Uh, you've got a lot of influence, um, and you've got a lot of influence in, in Washington. Maybe this is the time that we need to pull some of that influence, uh, to try to help us.
Yes, sir, we, we, we will take that into consideration as we move forward. Thank you. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. Per your request, um, Mr. Scott or Congressman Lee Chief will provide a presentation relative to gang-related criminality and gun violence in Portsmouth. Chief Burke?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. You asked for a, a brief update on, next slide, please, I'm sorry. On gun violence, gang activity in the city, and police department response times. Next slide, please. This is just a brief overview of calendar year twenty-twenty and calendar year to, to date for twenty-twenty-one. Last year, we ended up with an extraordinarily high number of homicides, thirty-four. Thirty of them involved firearms. Our investigators have made arrests in seventeen of those cases. There are two additional cases that are pending charges, uh, waiting on some information back from the medical examiner and then go into the grand jury. This year to date, we've had three homicides. Firearms were used in all of them. One of them is pending a review of the circumstances. Uh, it may, may not end up being a criminal homicide. It may be a self-defense situation. Commercial robberies are running a little bit lower than they were last year. Um, we had fifty-nine in the city last year with firearms involved in forty-two of them. Year to date, we've had two with firearms involved in both of them. This time last year, we had had five commercial robberies. Our street robberies last year was also something of a small spike. Hundred and sixty-three folks were encountered on the street and firearms were involved in a hundred and nine of them. This year, our street robberies are down from last year. We had seventeen at this time last year. We're at thirteen year to date. Next slide, please. There's often questions about gun violence within the city. Last year, we had one hundred and forty individuals that were shot. Whether that was a fatal injury or simply an injury, a hundred and forty citizens were struck by gunfire. We had just over twenty-three-hundred calls from the citizens about shots fired. Some of those can be the same incident and will receive multiple calls to nine-one-one. In twenty-twenty, we had two hundred and eighteen firearms stolen in the city. Astonishingly, one hundred and thirty-one of those firearms were stolen from people's vehicles. Our investigators and patrol officers recovered eighty-four firearms. This year, again, about two-thirds of the firearms that have been stolen so far have been stolen from citizens' vehicles. We've recovered twelve of them. Next slide, please. We're focusing on an evidence-based response. Uh, we're identifying the geographic areas where people have been shot at high risks. We're putting our officers out to increase their interactions in those focus areas. And as I mentioned the other week in the State of the Department address, um, we are working on a multi-group, multidisciplinary coalition to come together and address gun violence and simply community violence. Uh, we have some national partners that we're in conversation with as well as victim rights groups and other advocates here within the city. Next step, next slide, please. In terms of gang violence within the city, um, I summarized briefly the criminal law definition of a gang. And it's three or more persons with an identity that are engaging in criminal acts. Uh, current indications show that we have at least five groups operating in the city that meet this definition. Uh, they're generally territorial and generally between the ages of fourteen and twenty-one. That is not an absolute, though. Next slide, please. A gang identified as the Six Hundred Gang was first identified in one of our schools uh, when he was investigating a assault and a dispute in the school. The Six Hundred Gang generally claims the area in and around South Side Gardens. It's made up of some other gangs that have consolidated and reshaped. And the folks are fairly young, fifteen to twenty-one. Uh, street gambling, narcotics trafficking, prostitution, and gun violence. In the Lincoln Park and Dale Homes, uh, we have the Three Hundred Gang that's typically operating. We've known about them for several years. Again, they were formerly members of other gangs that have reformed and reconsolidated into Three Hundred. Seventeen to twenty-two is the average range. Larceny from motor vehicle, robbery, narcotics, gun violence are their focuses. Next slide, please. There's a gang that were, that's identified itself as Thirteen Hundred. Uh, it's generally a younger group of folks that are a subset or in some relationship with the Three Hundred Gang. In twenty-twenty, uh, two of those members were killed in homicides and shootings. There have been a number of, um, brief bursts of gun violence that we can attribute to, to members of this gang or in association or retaliation for stuff involving the Thirteen Hundred. Next slide, please. Two of the older and more established gangs are the One Thirty, Two Hundreds and the Rich Rollin' Forties. Generally, the involvement there, as you see, is Craddock and South Side Gardens. These groups typically have older members ranging into their thirties. Uh, the One Thirty and Two Hundred group, uh, do associate nationally with the Bloods, which is a recognized national organization, national gang. The Rich Rollin' Forties are associated with the Crips. Um, they're both involved in narcotics, fraud scams, uh, some of the unemployment scams we heard about during the summer with COVID and unemployment checks. Next slide, please. The exact relationship of how many members are in these gangs, how much crime they're actually involved in is hard to pin down. Uh, we can estimate that about forty to sixty percent of our gun violence is probably associated to gang-related activity. Of the thirty-four homicides last year, we can directly attribute six of them to gang relation and gang-involved persons. As I mentioned before, we're shifting into this community violence intervention program. We're collecting data and bringing our stakeholders into the, into meetings now. We want to take a broad approach, not just law enforcement, but community-based, social services, victims and victims' families, other support organizations to offer them together and first focus on preventing gun violence. And then to the extent possible, we want to move on to intervention, being able to intercept it. Next slide, please. And this, there was also a question about police response time. The area that's most under the control of the police is the time it takes us to actually arrive on scene from the time the call is dispatched to us. In January of twenty-twenty, you can see our priority one, two, and three calls. That's our total response time is from the time the citizen calls nine-one-one until the time the officer gets there. But that travel column represents the time from when the call is assigned to a police officer. And he actually tra, he or she travels to the scene of the incident and meets with and meets with the citizens. They're generally pretty short in terms of travel time, although the total response time can draw out just a bit. And if I may, can we go back one slide? I mentioned prevention and intervention. On Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, officers received a call of a subject on a social media platform that was streaming live video, displaying firearms, making threatening statements. Officers were able to view the livestream, identify the location, the subject. They then developed some vehicle information about this individual and were able to locate the vehicle on Victory Boulevard, at which time they made a traffic stop and had an encounter with the subject. Three firearms were recovered just in that one encounter, as well as $6,000 in cash and a small amount of drugs. So, we are focusing on the intervention, and we can go two slides ahead, and I welcome your questions.
Thank, thank, thank you, Chief. Are, are there any questions from? Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Chief, how many staff persons do you have in prevention and intervention?
At this point, we're still in the coming-together phase of bringing our stakeholders in. I'm involved, Assistant Chief Prince is involved, one of my captains are directly involved in it. We also had the district captains involved. In terms of direct intervention, this incident on Sunday was the patrol officers on duty identified this individual and, and made the arrest.
Do you have professional prevention and intervention folk on staff?
We do not, sir.
Thank you, sir. No more questions.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Chief, thank you for your service that you have given over the years. Mine is not necessarily a question for you, but it's, it's a comment that until we take seriously looking at the root causes of crime in our community, and that being socioeconomic conditions that exist, until we look at those things seriously, bringing in resources that the chief nor any police is really responsible for, because they generally are reacting to situations. But it is those things that cause much of these crimes, which, which there's been much social research done on that. The reluctance has been the, the will of our community to stop approaching crime from just a law enforcement perspective, but approaching it from a socioeconomic, mental health perspective. And I, I think that when we really put serious attention to it and apply what we have learned from research and best practices, and also looking at socioeconomic conditions, then we will see a significant change. Now, I realize that this is just like a pipeline. There are some that have gone through, and they're at a stage where the criminal law enforcement is the option. However, I think that until we stop the flow of the pipeline by addressing it with socioeconomic issues and with socioeconomic remedies, that we're not going to see that flow in the pipeline stop. So, I'm, I'm hoping that when we bring on a new city manager, that we would charge that city manager with bringing a broad perspective, bringing in resources, and not just put together a citizens' commission, but to bring true scholarship and research and best practices to looking at root causes. I also want to say that we know that there are other gangs in this community that are not identified on these slides. A lot of these gangs wear suit and ties, and they go around suppressing education. They go around not trying to provide living wages. They, they go around and continue to perpetuate systems of poverty. And so, I just want to point that out, that we have not just gangs that we identify in the criminal context, but we have a lot of them that are wearing suit and ties and dresses that help to perpetuate much of the suppression that we see in these communities. And I just want to, to express that because I believe we are in a position to, to make a difference if we're committed to it. And that's all I have to say, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Chief Burke, we appreciate the, the presentation. And Dr. Whitaker alluded to a lot of the things that I was going to say, because a lot of times, you know, it's not just one area. It's not just our Police Department. It's not just our City Council. It's not just our Black community. It's not just our White community. It's going to take all of us coming together with resources and ideas and commitment to the poverty that exists in our localities, in our cities. It's going to take our churches as well to get involved, because that is who our citizens look to in the community for resources a lot of times. And it is just not falls on the back of one person. And I know that me and my councilmen gentlemen have been getting a lot of emails from citizens in the community asking, what are we going to do? You know, what are we going to do? You know, and, and it's not just a solution for, for council to come up with one idea, and then it's a Band-Aid and it's going to be fixed. There's poverty, there's homelessness, there's jobs that need to be created. I know that there's conversation about the recreation centers being reopened, but just one avenue is not going to fix this situation. It's going to take all of us coming together and being committed to the process. And so, I thank you for the presentation. We've all been a little bit more enlightened by the presentation. I would hope that more of our citizens will look at this and, and to kind of get an idea of what we're facing. And just everybody need to roll up their sleeves and we need to get it done, because we've been elected to serve, but we can't do it alone. So, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Of course, all of my colleagues are one-hundred percent right. But these are the hands that we are dealt. Are we to succumb and to continue to use those root causes as an excuse for us not to put together a community policing effort, a community effort that goes to these communities? I mean, these are our problems. We have to solve them. And we cannot continue to talk about how poor we are or, or we don't have this, or we don't have that. We have to go in these communities. We have to have prevention specialists. We have to have intervention specialists. And those folk that have those qualities a lot of times don't meet the requirements that we set. So, we can do it. Despite all of the things that we have that we say is problematic to us, we can do it. We know we need police-community relations. We know we need a greater community effort. We know we need recreational programs. But we continue to say the root causes of which we know. But if we put those efforts together, we're going to pull ourselves out of all of that. So, I'm not one to, to dispute those things that my colleagues talk about. I'm one to say in spite of, we can overcome and defeat this. But without prevention specialists, without intervention specialists, without going in these communities and creating these relationships with these kids and these adults, we're going to continue on the downside. But change is coming, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Listening to Dr. Whitaker, Councilman Lucas Burke, and Councilman Battle, it, it inspires me to hear these words coming from you. And I look forward in the not-too-distant future being able to bring some information before Council on this community violence initiative. We recognize within the Police Department and with our developing partners that community violence is a community-wide problem. In fact, in some places, it's actually treated as a public health emergency. We are looking at our healthcare partners. We are looking at national organizations that have done tremendous work in other significant cities around the country. And it's going to be more than just law enforcement. We're, we're bringing many partners together on this with a sense of urgency, because it's, it's time to do something now, and it's time to take action. So, I look forward to giving you an update in the not-too-distant future as this program comes together.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief, for those comments. And I, I would just add to that. I was fortunate to participate in, in, in a community event that included the new mayor of Baltimore, the city of Baltimore, Maryland. And one of the things that Mayor Scott had talked about was to, to, to look at gun violence as a public health issue. Because in our country, we have yet to look at gun violence as a true public health issue and put the resources in front of that public health issue will begin to make the progress that we're all, all, all talking about. It is a public health issue. And, 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 and we need to deal with it as a community and as a country. So, I look forward to hearing the additional information and the initiative and working with my colleagues to move, move the process forward. Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Yeah, yes. Is that Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
I want to thank Mr. Burke for the presentation, but I, I think one thing we need to look at, attitude reflects leadership. And with that being said, one of the things we need to do is stop all of the fussing and fighting among us grown-ups, us, us political officials, because we're setting the tone for how our children see things. And if the, the leaders of a city is setting the tone by always arguing, fussing, putting hit pieces out against each other, that is what you're going to get in the community. So, I think what we need to do is make sure we set the tone. And also, we need to stop just talking, because we've done a lot of talking in this city about what we're going to do. We need to put some resources behind what we're trying to really get done, because these kids are losing their lives. There's a lot of people in this city that's losing their lives because we're just talking a lot but not putting actual resources behind the talk. So, I think it's time, I think we have a council that can do that. We need to look to see evidence-based programs to see what can bring the community back to where it needs to be. But it's time for us to really stop the talking, because I know it's, it's been a lot of conversation in, in just this and this presentation. But now it's time to actually put some programs in place to make sure that we put, give our children, give our city the best opportunity to succeed.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions?
I have, I have.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
This is the city of Portsmouth's problems. We have to solve our problems. We look for agencies to come in and to do what we need to do. Everybody's got a philosophy, but nobody wants to implement or help implement or look at implementing certain issues in an expedited manner. I get the same calls you do. All of us get the calls of, what are we going to do about gun violence? What are we going to do about these kids and these guns? But we can't continue to talk. We have to implement programs in the community. It doesn't take a lot of money. I've calculated what number of programs would cost, and it's many a money. The problem is that we are philosophers and we're not implementers. We need to get off of the talk, walk the walk, and help implement these programs. Do you know what it means to South Side to see Deandre Barnes and Paul Battle walk through there with the consentment of a program to improve the quality of life? Do you know what it would do to folk to see Ms. Lisa Lucas Burke and the great Dr. Whitaker just to come down? And we put some programs in these areas. And just to spend an hour there, thi, this is an immense treasure that we can do ourselves. And we can do these things. And in the near future, God willing, we are going to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief, for, for your presentation and, and all the work of you and your officers in keeping our city safe.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to speak with you. And all the credit has to go to the, the frontline workers, the patrol officers, the detectives, and our support staff that, that make this happen. And they get the credit for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. James Wright, City Engineer, per the request of Council, is going to lead an open discussion relative to the city's flow acceptance, acceptance policy. Wright?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm back this evening to answer any questions that you may have as a follow-up to the presentations I provided last week. Rather than me go through a bunch of criteria like I did last time, I think it is best that I, that I hear from you and answer your questions to the best of my ability.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
All right, I appreciate that format, Mr. Wright. The, the question I had was just the follow-up with what the developer emailed in regards to the flow rate issue of there being, and I don't know the technicalities of, of it, but evidently there are some onsite type of mechanisms versus what the city requires. Are you familiar with the email that I'm talking about?
You're talking about the letter from the developer with Holly.
Right, right, right. So, what's the, what's the, as far as what they were asking, what is your response to that?
I would say that it's too soon. He's asking that we waive the current policy. As I mentioned last week, we do need to take a look at it. And we've identified those areas and those additional things for analysis that we need to look at. Those things include low-pressure zones, critical areas, current and future land years patterns, and flow data requirements that we will work with developers and get from developers on. We're in the process of doing that analysis right now to, to waive that requirement. I think what, it, it's too soon. We've had a number of projects in the past come through the city that have used just flow data alone. And they've had, and they've had issues. They've had issues, not necessarily fire protection. They've had issues on the domestic side, would say getting more up to the third and fourth floor, being able to flush and use their showers. At a best-case At a best-case scenario, we say, yeah, go ahead and use your flow data. Nothing happens. Worst-case scenario, fire happens, sprinklers don't work, somebody loses their life.
So, you're saying that with the policy that we have in place that you realize that is an extra requirement but is out of a cause for safety concerns?
Well, it's not an extra requirement. It's based on our knowledge and familiarity with our system. Each system is unique. I can't apply our rules in Norfolk or Virginia Beach or Suffolk because we all have different systems. There's no legal requirement that whoever the governing body is has to decide this water distribution system provide fire protection other than having adequate water storage based on average consumption. It's very unusual for an existing water distribution system to be capable of providing every needed fire flow demand in its service area. If you think about it, most of our systems were designed way before we, what, 100 years ago? Had no idea what our current land use patterns were when it was being designed. So, of course, there are going to be some issues with providing those flows. And that's why we're not required to provide certain flows. What we're trying to do now, we're revisiting the policy, is to find a balance. And that's the process that we're going through right now to make it more equitable. But to automatically say to waive it, I think it's premature.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that, Mr. Wright.
Councilmember Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of questions. I'm still a little confused about the water level in our surface tanks. I'm being told that since we keep that level below half or at half, that's affecting our policy. That's why our flow policy is different from some of our sister cities. Is that an accurate statement?
No. The water level in the tank, which you refer to as the Broad Street tank, is set at that level because that's the amount of water that we can turn over daily to meet our requirement. We fill that tank up more than that, you're going to end up with stagnant water residuals and it's going to degrade your water quality. So, the primary reason how that level is set in the Broad Street tank is a water quality issue, being able to supply the quality water that our citizens get. If you can't turn water over, the water's going to get stale. The level of bacteria, I mean, the level of chlorination that you use to treat the water is going to start to degrade. And so, you're not going to get the quality of water you need to the customer if we change the level to more than already is. And that's based on years of operational analysis and work with the treatment plant and the folks that are out daily in distribution network.
So, that water level at the Broad Street tank has been like that for a number of years?
That I can't ask. I can only speak to the current state at this point. What I can say about the information that we get when we review site plans, if you're looking specifically at the hydrant data that we receive, that's all we receive. We don't receive a design for the sprinkler system. In any water distribution system, whether it be a sprinkler system, whether it be our own distribution system, you have losses due to friction in the pipe. So, just a quick take, looking at, say, the system going in to a four-story building, which is this what this is. So, you're going to have to have a black profiguration device. You're going to have eight to 15 PSI of loss over that device. You're going to have a loss due to elevation. You're going to have six PSI per floor if your average floor is 14 stories. So, at four stories, you're going to have, what, what's that, 56 PSI loss right there? Pressure loss from supply fittings, five to 10 PSI. Overall system pressure loss in the fire mains in and of themselves, five to 15 PSI. At your most remote sprinkler head on the fourth floor, you can see five to 10 PSI loss. And then you apply factor of safety. So, you're talking about a four-story building, potentially, you could have anywhere from 56 to 84 PSI loss just on the system, not on the city side, but that's on the owner's side. Information that we don't have, but we don't want to automatically say that you go ahead and use this and then your system is designed and can't meet because then you have to come in, then retrofit your system. You're going to have problems with customers that can't get their water pressure they need, can't flush their toilets, can't get their showers. There's a fire and my sprinklers only come on the second floor when I need it on the fourth floor. So, this is why the policy is set that way. I would ask that you allow us to do that additional analysis so that we can work it out. And maybe they don't need it, maybe they do. But right now, it's too soon to say.
When do you think, Mr. Wright, when do you think you'll be coming back to council for some recommendations?
Probably sometime towards the end of March is when we'll get through all the analysis. Because there, like I said, there are about five or six factors that we need to take a look at. And we have the policy out there, but if we come back and we make modifications, we need to be sure. And because it is for public safety. It not only protects the city, but it protects the residents that live there and it protects the owner. I mean, your $90,000 or $100,000 pump is going to save your million-dollar building, save someone's life, save someone's property.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for the presentation. There are some new developers who are coming online. And you mentioned that there will be a case-by-case basis on this. So, they determine a policy. Do they adopt the one by the city? Or is that what you're looking to go on the case-by-case basis at what you look at? Because we've had some developers to reach out to us as council members to say that, you know, that would cripple their development by having to purchase the additional pumps or whatever is needed to comply with the demands of the policy. So, can you kind of help us understand which developers, old or new, existing, which ones would be exempt or which ones would be on a case-by-case?
The policy applies right down to every commercial development that comes in in any subdivisions where you're doing water line extensions and things of that nature. If I'm building a single-family home, say, in the product area on Infill Lot, it does not apply to those residential-type developments. On a case-by-case basis, what I was referring to is once we get through the policy, we'll know what criteria, basically for which area or which zone or however we define it when we come back with the policy, of what you will have to do. So, case-by-case is referring to if I'm, say, in, I'm going to just throw it in, if I'm in Cavalier Manor and I've got a large development, we'll know all those things about pressure zones, critical areas, development trends. And so, in fact, these are the criteria that you'll have to do when you're looking at water demand and fire protection. And say, northern churchland, it may be different. So, case-by-case, depending on where you are, that's going to be how we apply the policy once we go through the analysis.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Battle?
Yes. Mr. Wright. In my investigations, because of the age of our system, it can only handle from 40 to 70% of the water pressure that can go through the pipes. It's said that we have, it goes below 40% sometimes, but there's an autonomic system that's in place that brings it back between 40 and 70%. And the reason for this is that we have an old system and we can't push that system because it will create too many problems for us. Along with filling the tanks to the top, we can't get the quality of water. So, we need not let these investors push us into anything that's going to create a larger problem for the city. If they need the pumps to boost up the water pressure for their four-story buildings, they need to get that rather than we take a chance on overloading the pressure capacity of our antiquated water system. Is this, this is what I've found in my research. Is that a credible argument here?
Yes and no. There's a lot of validity to what you said. It's not necessarily totally the way I would phrase it, but in layman's terms, when you have an older system like that, you're not, the pipes aren't, if you have, say, a 70-year-old pipe, 10-inch pipe, it's not operating like a 10-inch pipe anymore. It may be operating like an eight or something less than that. So, you're not going to get the flows and the pressures through that pipe. Each pipe's going to be different, so it's hard to say that what that percentage is going to be. The model that we have tries to predict that to the best of its capability as you do upgrades and improvements. Those things are factored into the model as well where you have larger projects and you come in, you do whole-rate upset, upgrades of utilities, those areas are better off than some of the older areas that you haven't got to yet. So, yeah, when you have a degraded system, your water pressure and the amount of water you get through the system flows along with that. So, in that terms, yes, you're correct.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any other questions? So, we look forward, Mr. Wright, to getting the follow-up information regarding the best way to proceed as we go forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Colleagues, we do have a need to go into a closed session regarding a personnel matter. Madam Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, sir. There is a move to go into closed electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsections 2.2-3708A.2, excuse me, 3, and 2.2-3711A.1 and City Council ordinance 2020-102 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for the position of city assessor.
Do we have a motion in second?
Move for approval.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We're going to take a few minutes break and we will go into closed session. Okay, are we ready? Okay. Would you like to go ahead?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, there is a move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered, and closed meeting just concluded.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We need, thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We're coming out of closed session, back into the work session, and then I'll adjourn it. And then we could all recess until seven.
We are in public, sir, and you are breaking until seven.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.